Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. Today is February 14th, 2024, and this is the regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. If you'd like to call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ettinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Mark Kelmore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey. Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. Thank you. Mrs. Ettinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to get started tonight with bright lights, and we have an exciting guest tonight. I welcome Dan Schreier and Julian Schwartz.
All right. Well, as the gentlemen come up, as Dr. Piasik said, tonight during our bright lights, we have the great fortune of celebrating a Waukesha legend in Mr. Julian Schwartz. Julian had his Waukesha South jersey retired on Tuesday, February 6th, and is here with us this evening along with Mr. Schreier. Many of you know Julian. He's a 1999 graduate of South where he finished in the top 5% of his class academically, and this led to him being named Academic All-State in addition to being a three-time All-State selection on the basketball court. Additionally, Julian finished as the leading scorer in South history and was named the 1999 Associated Press Wisconsin Player of the Year. So, we're very proud to celebrate with Julian, and I'd like to next turn it over to Mr. Schreier.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for having us. Last Tuesday was a really special night, getting to honor Julian, one of the greatest Wisconsin State High School basketball players, but not only a great basketball player, but also just an incredible human being. One of the highlights of the night, before I speak to a couple of the accomplishments, one of the highlights of the night, we're just seeing the incredible turnout from the community that came to speak to Julian and see Julian. Of all the compliments I heard, there were a lot about basketball, but many of them were just about how good of a person he is, about his great character, and just how tremendous it was getting to watch him and be around him and see him wear a Waukesha South jersey. So, like any good student, I'm going to take a little bit from Morgan Schwartz, who honored Julian. Morgan is Julian's nephew, and he presented, got a center court in front of a big crowd and presented a really nice speech that honored some of Julian's accomplishments, and I'm going to read some of those accomplishments. So, proud alumnus from the class of 1999, as Dr. Seabert said, he graduated in the top 5% of his class and was named 1999 WIA Basketball Academic All-State and the AP Wisconsin State Player of the Year. He's the current all-time leading scorer in Waukesha South school history. He was a member of the 1999 Black Shirt State Tournament Team and a scholarship player on the 2000 Wisconsin Badger Final Four Team, recipient of the 2016 Marquette University Alumni Counselor Education and Counseling Psychology Achievement Award. 2020 inductee as a former high school player into the Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. He has 20 years of coaching basketball at both the high school and collegiate levels, including at Waukesha South High School, at Marquette University, at Indiana University, the University of Memphis, and most recently at Georgia Tech. He was also the assistant coach for the 2020-2021 ACC Tournament Champions, the Georgia Tech Yellow Jackets. We also were able to do our first leadership conference, our Student-Athlete Leadership Conference, and Julian was our keynote speaker this fall. Just an incredible human being and a really special night on Tuesday. So, I'm going to turn the mic over to Julian.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, this continues to be just overwhelming. Last Tuesday, I thought it would stop. It was overwhelming, and this continues to be. Let me just say this, this is awesome. This is just a really great recognition, a true honor, just a special treat to be here. My parents are both former educators, so my dad watches the show religiously, and so they probably have it on right now. So, just a complete honor, and very, very grateful and appreciative for you guys to have me. I'm a big fan of the superintendent. I met him at the SALT Conference, and so I really, really grateful superintendent for having me. So, with that, listen, it was overwhelming last Tuesday. Very appreciative to Dan. He's a great athletic director, and Maria, who I've gotten to know, just an awesome principal. Appreciative for them for having me. I want to highlight Bo Richter was a former coach at South, and he had a lot to do. So, very, very grateful for all their time, effort, and energy to the recognition and so forth. What I would say is this to, you know, basketball, it's been really good to me for a long, long time, and it's just, it's crazy to think it's been 25 years already since it last played at South, really coming probably a few weeks away from when we celebrated going to state on that court. So, it's hard, it's just hard to imagine, but it's been 25 years. The game has given me so much, so many wonderful opportunities, experiences, but when I reflect, and that's what Tuesday really was about, the greatest, really, my experiences have always aligned with Waukesha South, and so that was really, really special. I would also say this, and I told the, you know, the group, the team, you know, anything you pursue, I think in life, it should always be about the front of the jersey. You know, basketball, it's a team sport, and so for me, I hope it's always been about Waukesha South, even though the jersey's retired into the back of the name. Nothing is ever accomplished without pursuing the front of the jersey, and so I share the award. I had just tremendous teammates, just awesome, awesome teammates, had a Hall of Fame coach in Tom Riegel, and mostly I share it, you know, I took the year off really just to spend the whole year with my parents and almost kind of doing a sabbatical, and I really share it with them the most. And it was just a great time to really reflect on my family and all they've sacrificed, and so, yeah. So, I just, again, thank you for having me. It's been overwhelming, just really, really grateful and appreciative, and a big fans of all you do, so thanks for all you do for Waukesha. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We're proud of you. We're proud of the legacy of South basketball. I mean, it's just really exciting to see the crowds turning out and have such an exciting moment to celebrate you, but not only you as an individual, but what you've done for our athletics programs. Thank you. All right. We are moving on to our student representatives. All right, we have our South student representatives with us tonight. Ananya Sriniva and Addison Berry to update us on events and activities at South High School.
Just a sec while we wait for it to airplay. We're going to give a presentation on Waukesha South's bright lights. Can you hear me okay? All right. So, my name is Addison Berry. I plan on attending a four-year university and majoring in biochemistry. I also plan on getting a master's degree in that field. And just some things I'm involved with at South. I'm part of the Student Council Executive Board as Public Relations. I'm in Art Club, GSA Diversity Club, Rock Climbing Club, Link Crewe, and National Honor Society. Then, introduction for her.
Hi, my name is Ananya, and I also plan on attending a four-year college or university and majoring in biomedical engineering and business. And like Addie said, some things I'm a part of are DECA, FBLA, mock trial, HOSA, as well as Link Crewe and Student Council.
So, we're just going to start with some celebrations from semester one leaning into semester two. So, this past quarter, we're celebrating some of our star students. So, here are our students of the quarter displayed.
And they're nominated by their teachers that they have in that semester. Some of the achievements of our students, 53% of all of our students at South have achieved high honor roll for the first semester, and almost 408 students have achieved a high honor roll with a GPA of 3.5 or more, and 194 students have achieved an honor roll of a GPA of 3 to 3.5.
So, another thing we're celebrating is that in our school's kindness club, they were able to raise recently $800 for the women's shelter, which is awesome.
And with attendance, our goal this semester is to get 95%, and up to now, we've had 92%, and we're really proud of that number and hope to keep it growing. Some things that we're trying to help kids with is having a regular nighttime routine, asking about school and classes, checking their grades and attendance, and kind of just speaking with students about things that they're struggling with so we can help them out.
In our art club, we had a bunch of art students create Valentine's cards, which labeled positive notes for the STEM students down at the elementary school, and this is our third year working, doing this community project, so.
A couple of weeks ago, I won Distinguished Young Woman at Waukesha, and this was in a competition with categories of talent, interview, self-expression, and scholastics. This is also a scholarship program, so with winning Distinguished Young Woman at Waukesha, I also won scholarship money, and this is the first time in the history of the Distinguished Young Woman program that they've had it taken place in Waukesha. Before, they had like Brookfield, Elm Grove, O'Conne, and things like that, so I hope to represent Waukesha in the state competition in this summer.
And then, as discussed before, Julian Schwartz retired his jersey, and we had a celebration basketball game for that.
Another great achievement at South is that we're now a Project Adam Hart Safe School. So, South now has added three AEDs to our campus, one outside between our turf field and track, and then one in the fieldhouse and one in the main office.
We also recently had our signing day. So, this is where some of our student athletes go and sign for the university that they are committing to, and some of the athletes included in the picture are Chris Flowers, Ben Jimenez, Brighton Stab, Tanis Lynch, Elijah Grant, Ben Babcock, Charlene Rose, and then Chris Lemus, Hector Carranza, Tyler Williams, Natalie Harding, Tyler Conger, Kayden Brenneman-Sorensen, Zachary Watson, and Evan Stout.
So, in terms of wrestling, it was the third consecutive win of Craig Belker in his meet this past weekend, and we also had three seniors headed to sectionals. In the middle for conference champ is Ethan Kojus.
Now, we're going to go through some of our state and national send-offs, which include boys cross-country, boys volleyball, swim and dive, esports, dance, and cheer.
So, the boys cross-country went to state, and they did an amazing job. They took second in the regional and won the Lake Country Lutheran Invitational, and their leading runner was Ben Babcock, who PR'd at state this past month.
Then, we are also celebrating our boys volleyball, who went to state for the first time since the 90s.
We also have our swim and dive team that also went to state and our esports team that went to state as well. And we also have our mock trial program that is also going to state and our HOSA program that is sending many students from freshmen to seniors to state as well, and then also our DECA team that is also going to state in a couple of weeks.
On our ski team, our senior Connor Boyle is leading it, and they are headed to state. Boyle is a three-sport student athlete.
And the dance team took sixth place in their D2 Palm at state this past week.
Additionally, with our dance team, one of our students, a junior Julia Barron, earned state honors for her solo performance.
And then Cheer also went to Nationals just a couple of days ago, and they competed there at Disney World. And this is just a few pictures of them with their teams.
So, recently, we did have to say farewell to our school's officer, Josh, but we are welcoming our new officer, Steve Pipia. Then, we also have a musical coming up in February, and that is The Wizard of Oz. Showtimes for that are going to be 7:00 PM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, February 22nd through 24th, and then 2:00 PM on Sunday, February 25th.
And then, our Waukesha Student Council is also doing a community event, the Easter Egg Dash, which will be March 16th, starting at 10:00 in the morning, and it will be hosted on the soccer field, and we're hoping to invite everyone in the Waukesha community. Kids from ages zero to eight will be able to attend, and we'll have free prizes and free entry for anyone.
Now, our booster club is also hosting an 80s-themed event to raise some funding. And here's just a couple of images showing our black shirt pride.
And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a fantastic presentation. I love your graphics. Might have to hire you guys for some side jobs. I'm sure we have some questions we would like to start. Mr. Moore?
I just have a comment. Way to go on the attendance, 92%. So, I want to give you all a round of applause for that one if we all could, so.
Ananya, we wish you luck as you move forward, because you are quite an amazing, impressive young lady, both of you are. My first question is for you, Ananya, how do you find the time to do all those activities on your list? How do you prioritize things?
Well, I try to stay like with like a timetable, or like I try to manage my time, but I do like get off track sometimes, but I think it's important to like schedule things that like are important to you, and a lot of these things do mean a lot to me, so it's not that hard to like find time to do these things.
That's impressive. And Addison, you mentioned biochemistry.
Yes.
So, obviously, you've taken a lot of science classes.
Yes.
What led you down that path?
Actually, my sophomore year, I had an opportunity to go to a zebrafish conference at UWM, and that was with one of our teachers that quit just last year, Ms. Kepel, and a lot of the experiments there inspired me to follow a career similar to what was happening there.
It's very exciting. We wish you best of luck as well. Anything else? All right, excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to South for all the success. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we are now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have two speakers tonight, and as such, speakers will be notified at three minutes, but will be allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board or Committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the Board, not the audience. The School Board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the Board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. Our first speaker tonight is Carrie Cumro.
My name's Carrie Cumro Mihas. I'm the president of the Education Association of Waukesha and have been teaching in the school district for 25 years. I'm here today on Valentine's Day, asking this Board to show some love to the teachers in Waukesha. The most significant way you could demonstrate the value you place on the educators in the school district is to vote tonight to give us the full CPI increase of 4.12% on our actual salary. The costing formula for increasing teacher's salary is complex, but I'll break it down very simply here. Basically, the amount that's shared out to the media and to the general public is misguided at best, if not dishonest. The amount that was shared out as the total base wage and supplemental increase for the teachers in the district last year was 5%. I can assure you that even after 25 years in this district, I did not receive 5%. The reason for that is because of where I am on the pay scale. I'm no longer eligible for the steps and lanes increase that's considered supplemental pay, and since the CPI is calculated on the base wage of our pay scale instead of our actual salary, the 2% that they say is given to us as the CPI increase is much less than that for most of us. Add in the stipend, that's really just a placating gesture because it's not added to our salary towards our retirement, and you get a false 5% that's shared out to the general public. Also, last year, there was no agreement reached during the negotiations process because of the low number that was offered, and the Board imposed an increase that they felt was reasonable without making any adjustments or changes during the negotiations process. Unfortunately, this did nothing to help with teacher retention and was the main reason given for teachers leaving in the exit survey that the EAW provided to anyone who resigned from the district. It's been stated several times at Board meetings in recent years that Waukesha is a lucrative place to teach. That used to be the case, but it is no longer. For many years, Waukesha was a top five district in terms of well-paid teachers. As of several years ago, we aren't even in the top 25 of the highest-paid districts in the state. With inflation, we make less than we did 10 years ago. Now, to address the idea of the administration raises, while the building and district-level administrators might be given the same percentage that's offered as a wage increase, administrators are given this percentage on their actual salary. If we want to talk fairness and equity, what should be occurring is that the administrative staff should also be placed on a salary schedule. This would mean that top-level administrators, including Dr. Seabert, would get a salary increase that was averaged out over an entire administrator pay scale, with the base wage being calculated off of the lowest-level vice-principal salary. If this was the case, the district would save hundreds of thousands of dollars in administration raises that could be given back to the staff actually doing the difficult work in this district. Teacher pay has not kept up with administrator increases at all. Great teachers in Waukesha are leaving to go to districts who offer better benefits, including better insurance, more personal days, or even PTO for teachers, and better salaries. We are no longer a competitive district in terms of our wages and benefits. It's time to address this issue before the quality of education in Waukesha goes down anymore. And just a reminder that there is a School Board election coming up in a few short months. Many Waukesha teachers live in Waukesha, and as we saw last year, teachers vote. Just something to think about as you make your decisions about our salary increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Reese.
Quote, "I'm here to discuss teacher retention. According to a Wisconsin Public Radio article, enrollment in teacher programs nationwide has fallen by 35%. Along with fewer people entering the profession, there are also issues around retaining teachers. In Waukesha, over the last three years, 316 professional staff members have left, 98 retired and 218 resigned. Most of the resignations came at the end of the school years, but some came during the school year and a few within the first two or three months, in the first few, three months of the year." These numbers represent a turnover rate, these numbers represent a turnover rate every, each year of about 10% of the staff. Over the last three years, we have hired over 300 new teachers. How does this impact our students? This is a quote from Ellie McHenry, president at that time of the Educators Association of Waukesha in 2019. As you see, things don't change around here. It's the same old complaints, year after year after year. So, I want to address first off, the resignation, the resign that we see, the decrease in people looking into becoming teachers. So, they say it's fallen by 35%, which has nothing to do with Waukesha. Why it's in here, I don't know, but it has nothing to do with Waukesha whatsoever. There's a lot of violence and misbehavior in schools. Why, if you're in like a student in Waukesha, would you want to become a teacher? You know, when you see what goes on in the school, it would leave a bitter taste in your mouth. Why would you want to do this program? Why would you want to go into this career when it's racked with so much disciplinary problems that you see every day? And when school is unpleasant, then you're not going to want to become a teacher, of course. So, the other thing is, of course, this is talking about resignation of staff members, not only teachers are throwing in here, but why do teachers resign? Why do they leave? There is, I have family members that are teachers, one's a second-grade teacher, and she's sick of the training requirements, the constant curriculum going over and redo it, redoing it. She's been teaching for 20-some years, and she just told me she almost quit this past year because she's done with having to start all over all the time. That is not any other problem, but she's just sick of getting ready because she's teaching second grade. Nothing much changes here, you know, but she's forced to change all the time. So, there is that, and that has nothing to do with the School Board. That has everything to do with DPI. They're the ones that create all these requirements all the time, and the teachers' union is the same people who back, who's running DPI.
Two minutes.
The other thing is, teachers also, a lot of them leave to teach specific subjects. So, if they want to teach a specific course in mathematics or English or something, and there is teachers ahead of them that are in that subject field, they're not going to be able to move in if they're only a few years older than them. They're never going to be able to get to that point. So, they leave and go to another district to teach the subject that they really want to teach, if it's an English course or whatever it is that they want to teach in, they will leave to do that. Hats up, that's good. That's what you want to be able to do in life, you know? And the other thing is, what's never mentioned is how many are asked to resign, or in the time I've been here, only one's been fired that I know of. So, teachers are asked to resign, and they aren't good teachers, and they're asked to resign, and they get a letter of recommendation to do so. They don't talk about that. So, what we really need to do, and what Ellie McHenry or any of the teachers' union never talks about, is what the baseline is. What your baseline of turnover is from year to year. I work at a company. We don't have 100% retention, and not even close. We probably have more than 10% turnover. So, it's what the baseline is that matters. Where are we coming from? What's going on around us? Are we out of the norm? Heck no, we're not. Anyways, thanks.
32nd.
Thank you. All right, moving into our general business for this evening, our first item is minute approval. We have minutes from the January 10th, 2024, regular board meeting. Looking for a motion on that. Mrs. Voight?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes and commend Sue for the excellent job she did of keeping track of our entire parliamentary procedure discussion.
I agree.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. Any modifications or discussion? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 8-0. Right, next up is our WEF report. Mr. Barowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, the Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors met last Thursday, February 1st, and as you know or should know, the Evening for Education is scheduled for April 11th, and we have only 17 seats available for what is obviously a very popular event. As I think you also know, Board of Education members get 25% off ticket prices, so you can use the code that you were provided last month if you don't already have a seat. We do have some ad space still available and just a handful of sponsorships, so getting very close to wrapping the whole thing up. Our WEF Award winners have been selected, and they are, for the Corporate Partner Award, Educators Credit Union; for the Community Partner Award, the Kai Lurmer Memorial Fund or Lurmer Family; and for the Sally Jo Machelko Lifetime Excellence in Education Award, somebody you might recognize, Joe Como. The WEF-held scholarship application window is open on January 8th and is going to close on March 18th, so things are going well. Deadline is quickly approaching, really just over a month away. Grant window is also now open. 2024 grant application window will be open from February 12th to April 8th. Communication has been sent out to staff, and we are now working with principals to see who may want to communicate, excuse me, who we might want to work with to do a site visit. Also been enjoying seeing some of the 2022 grants in action. Special thanks to the business office and especially to Heather Stevis and Mike Getch for all their hard work in making sure the grant winners can access their funds. We will be announcing the amount available for grants in March for this year. Annual sponsors. So we're excited to share that almost all of our annual sponsors, we have already renewed for 2024. As you might know, we're always looking for more, so please share any context that you think could be interested. Bucks game, come and enjoy a Bucks game. You have until February 26th to order tickets for the Waukesha Education Foundation Night at the Fiserv Forum. Game is on March 24th, which is the Sunday night of spring break, which seems to be a perfect spot for it, for attendance, anyway, for the district. And it's against the Oklahoma City Thunder. There's various price points available, and the flyer is at your desk. All right, and not to get too far ahead, but we're starting to plan for our August 1st golf outing. Make sure you're saving a date on your calendar. And if you know of anyone who might be interested in sponsorship, if you couldn't help us find a sponsor for the Evening for Education, that formal event, maybe you know someone who's more interested in a casual event like a golf outing. As far as our Board of Directors, we welcome two members, Matt Engelen and Kelly Savical, to our board this year. We have one more advisory position left to fill, but we're excited to have both of them join and step forward to serve on our board. We've been featuring board members, if you haven't noticed, on our social media this month, so make sure you're following WEF on social media. And as always, we're always looking for more members on the board, so if you know of anyone, you know to contact either me or Lynette. And I think that's all I've got. Any questions?
Mrs. Voight. The invitation at your desk, I thought, was very interesting as well for the STW-embedded agriculture. This is one of the recipients. I think you were part of presenting it last.
Last year, yeah, yeah, that was fun.
And to see it in action, I'm really excited to see the follow-through on it.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Clark, will you report the gifts, please?
Yes, three gifts tonight for the planetarium. $9,500 from Tom and Beth Kizner. The money will be used for the 10-year license for the show called Experience the Aurora. $2,000 from Lee Keith to be used for interactive displays and wall graphics, and $1,000 from Marge Holsbug to also be used for interactive displays and wall graphics.
That's fantastic, thank you. All right, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. There are no expulsions for consideration this evening. The following policies were approved under Consent Agenda. Policy 6151, Return Checks; Policy 5505, Academic Honesty; and Policy 7440, Facility Secu-, sorry. Policy 7440, Facility Security was tabled. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Mrs. Voight.
I'm wondering if we should speak to the Policy 5505, the academic honesty, because it is, includes the concepts of artificial intelligence, which is a very new part of consideration for academic honesty. And just for the community to know that the policy has changed to reflect the concerns that staff have, to make sure that it's not impacting their performance in school.
Are you asking that we set it aside?
Just to talk about it, you know, like, let me set it aside to speak to it when we speak to that later in the agenda.
Okay. Would you like to leave it in the consent agenda and then speak to it as discussion when we get to the policy committee?
Sure, it'd be fine, it'd be fine, but just, I think we need to let the community know that, you know, we're trying to keep up with the times and have our academic honesty policy reflect that.
Mr. Zenobia, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Barowski, will you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So early this evening, Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved eight resignations, seven retirements, and 52 new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. Any further questions? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 8-0. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seabert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a couple of items quickly for the board. The first is that tomorrow is an early release day, and there's no school for kids or teachers on Friday, meaning we're halfway through February already, and the year continues to move very quickly. And then tonight, I'm also going to begin my monthly overnight field trip report during the superintendent's report, because that goes in accordance with our updated Policy 2340 on field trips and other district-sponsored trips that we approved in December at the Teaching and Learning Committee. Took a little while to get uploaded into NEOLA, so one trip will go back to December, and there'll be a couple of January trips, and the rest will be future trips coming up. And then every month, I will give you an update on the ones that I've approved that are going forward. So starting at the middle school level, we have Butler Middle School, 8th-grade graduation trip to Washington DC in Gettysburg that'll take place in June of 2025. Saratoga STEM, the Future City Competition in Washington DC, is actually this weekend, so we wish them good luck. At North High School, we have the Academic Decathlon State in Green Bay in March of '24. Girls Bowling Club State in Green Bay-Eschwabenon in March of '24. And we also had the Disney Parade Performance in Orlando coming up in January of 2025. In South High School, we have the Boys Swim Invitational that took place in Cedar Rapids, Iowa in January of '24, just this last month. You heard about the Mock Trial Team, they're going to Madison in the girls' report in March of '24. And they also mentioned the HOSA State Conference in the Dells, which stands for the Health Occupation Students of America, and that's the state competition for South in April of '24. At West High School, there was a girls' basketball tournament in Ousburg that I approved back in December of '23. There was a varsity cheer and state competition that took place in February for West. Academic Decathlon, they're also going to Green Bay in March of '24. Boys Bowling Club is going to state in Eshwabenon in March of '24. The Model United Nations Conference, they have a team going in Madison in March of '24. There's a softball tournament in April of '24. We'll always see if softball happens in April or not, right? Part of the deal. That's in Manitowoc and Shaboygan, that's in April. Varsity Girls Soccer is going to Madison for an overnight meet, or game, I guess we'd say, in '24 tournament. There's the HOSA State Conference for West as well in April '24. And then West also had a student qualify for the Microsoft Office Specialist US National Championship. That'll be in Orlando in June of '24. And then, lastly, we have two co-ops. We have our gymnastics co-op of North, Southwest, and CMH. They'll be going to the state meet in Wisconsin Rapids in March of '24. And then we have our co-op of North, Southwest, and Heritage Christian, that is for Alpine Ski. They have their state meet in lacrosse, and they went already in February of '24. So going forward, that'll be a shorter list. It'll be just the ones that I approve between this meeting and our next meeting, but we'll become accustomed to it. And we have, as you can see, lots of kids doing lots of really, really good things and advancing to state and national-level competitions, as you heard from the South Girls as well as everything here. It's impressive.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, so thank you.
In the past, not all of those would have come to the committee because they're competitive in nature, so it's kind of neat to hear.
Part of a series of competition, but at least, to your point, yes, you'll get to hear about a lot more things maybe than in the past.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. All right, well, let's move into our committee reports. So our first committee this evening is the Policy and Government Relations Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik.
What did I miss? I'm sorry.
Your chair.
Oh, my pages got out of order. Yeah, that's why Anthony was like, what are you talking about? Okay. I apologize, Mr. Barowski. The first committee report is Human Resources and Compensation.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, we have one action item this evening, approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The administration is recommending Ryan Pat for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Mr. Pat's vast leadership experience in Waukesha will be an asset to the district-level leadership. He's experienced in overseeing the Special Education Department at West, working with at-risk youth as an assistant principal and principal, and has led through crisis and drama, trauma, excuse me. He has high expectations, works to support staff to reach those expectations. He has built meeting and communication structures to keep stakeholders involved and informed. He's a listener, collaborative, has an excellent foundation and continuous improvement, and is primed to lead Student Services toward and forward in a positive direction. As far as his education goes, he received his Bachelor of Arts in Technology Education from UW-Stout and his Master of Science in Administrative Leadership from UW-Milwaukee. He's been an administrator in Waukesha since 2009, and as I'm sure you know, he is currently the principal at Waukesha West High School. Prior to Mr. Pat, or excuse me, prior to that, Mr. Pat taught technology education at West Dallas Central. His resume was provided in board docs. Salary and benefits are according to middle-management policies. I move to approve Mr. Pat as the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or discussion? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, take the roll call, please.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 8-0.
All right, we did have one discussion item this evening, which was teacher compensation. So this evening, the Human Resources Compensation Committee went into closed session to discuss teacher compensation regarding the base wage negotiation. If anybody has any questions or comments about that.
And that was agendized as discussion only?
It was, and it was in closed session, so.
Thank you.
So no action was taken. All right, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And now we move on to the Policy and Government Relations Committee. Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. So the Policy and Government and Relations Committee met on Monday, February 24th, I'm sorry, February 12th, here in the boardroom. And the agenda included one new and one revised policy, which both were tabled. Those were Policies 7440.02, Smart Monitoring Equipment, and 7440, Facility Security. So those will be brought back to the committee next time, which will be in April, and we will have further discussion and possible action on those items. We also have one action item for this evening and then a discussion item that was added for our consideration. The first action item was Policy 7540.08, a new policy on artificial intelligence. The committee reviewed Policy 7540.08. It was intended to address the potential impact of artificial intelligence, and the committee voted to approve this additional policy in the board policies. And I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. I think it's really a sign of the times that we have to put in to policy boundaries around the use of artificial intelligence, and I'm just amazed at the speed with which AI is evolving. And I hope that we humans can use it to our advantage and not the other way around. Any other comments or questions about the policy? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 8-0.
Our discussion item would then be on Policy 5505, which is academic honesty that was pulled from the consent agenda. We did not have that in the policy committee, but it did revolve around the artificial intelligence policy, which was reviewed as part of our packet.
Mrs. Voight.
I just would like to share the idea that there's a definition of plagiarism now that used to not be in the policy, and that definition is to steal and pass off the ideas, work, research, speech, art, music, et cetera, as one's own without crediting the source, and also speaking about the notion of presenting artificial intelligence platforms in place of their own work. You know, so I think it's important for students to realize that the policy has changed and that, you know, teachers are aware of the advancements that are available. And we have to communicate that the policy has changed in as many ways as we can, so this is one way to hopefully let people know that it is evolving.
And just to clarify, since we did not pull it from the consent agenda, but.
I'm sorry.
Just for that purpose of discussion, it is approved. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
All right, moving on to the second portion of our meeting, the government relations. Dr. Seabert had provided us a legislative update, included a lot of the information, some of which follows here. We discussed a bill that would fund positions at the Office of School Safety through September of '25, a possible Act 20 timeline adjustments, a bill to mandate community 4K programming, and the potential of decoupling of school voucher programs and school funding, voucher funding from the public school funding. The second information item we discussed was a brief overview and review of the WASB resolutions, where I was a delegate in January, January 17th, and we discussed some of the resolutions and how the votes went down as well. That concludes my report for this evening. We will meet again here in the boardroom on April 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next committee report tonight is Finance and Facilities, presented by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, February 12th. There is one action item for review, which is Policy 6236, Community Services Fund, Fund 80, which was a new recommendation from NEOLA. Due to the redundancy between this recommendation and existing DPI guidelines, the committee did not see the need to approve this policy. There were two discussion items. The first was the monthly budget report. Year-to-date revenue and expenditures are on pace with last year's activity. All funds are operating within the parameters outlined in the 2023-2024 budget. The second discussion item was the budget projections. The budget development calendar calls for a multi-year forecast to be presented to the FNF Committee annually. This information not only assists in the creation of next year's budget, but it also provides guidance. provides guidance on long-term planning. The committee was presented the findings from the latest multi-year budget projection. Declining resident enrollment continues to shape the district's financial picture. The enrollment projection for fiscal year 2024-2025 calls for an additional decline of 1.75%. In early March, the administration will have a more accurate staffing model projection for next year that will be based on more refined course selection data and enrollment numbers. It is anticipated that this annual rightsizing process will play a large role in closing the projected deficit. The next Finance and Facilities meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 11th, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next committee report is Teaching and Learning, given, given by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, February 6, 2024. Tonight's agenda includes one action item and two discussion items. Action was taken to approve the summer school program. The purpose of this action is to request approval for the School District of Waukesha's 2024 Summer School Program in accordance with Board Policy 2440 and Wisconsin State Statute 118.04. The district's summer school program has run a success, successful program designated to engage students with continued learning over the summer for many years. This year, summer school will be offered June 17th through July 12th and will take place at the following schools: Banting, Bethesda, Hadfield, STEM Elementary, Horni Middle School, and North High School. Course offerings include enrichment and readiness courses for students in grades K, 4K through eighth, along with high school credit recovery. Additionally, high school students can take virtual get-ahead courses that will run June 12th through July 19th, 2024. We are fortunate that many of our SDW teachers propose and teach summer school classes. Summer school registration is scheduled to begin on March 20th, 2024, and communications to families will begin over the next month. On a full, a vote of five to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the 2024 Summer School Program as presented. The committee requests board approval and ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions? Mr. Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Um, I'm actually super excited about the virtual get-ahead courses. I know that the start and end dates are still to be determined. Do we know, like, when it will, like, when the dates will be finalized, like, just a timeline, or are y'all still, I know it's still be determined, do you have a, like a estimate of, of the dates being arranged, or?
I, I think the dates we discussed, I think, here were pretty, pretty final?
Yeah, it's, but the start, the higher level, the, um, classes for the high school, they are to be determined, so we're still working on that, but we can bring an update back, um, so I don't have a final deadline right now, but we can bring that back.
Totally okay. I'm super excited about it, though, so, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So we have a second?
I thought we had a second.
Yep, Carrie, that's right. I already forgot. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piesek.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Here, first discussion item, the High School Science Update. High School Science continues its curriculum design cycle with biology, chemistry, and physics courses, seeking a new curricular resource to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. These courses are required for graduation, and currently, there are no standard district resources. The topic was a discussion item in September of this school year, so this was an update on the process following the pilot work. The team shared that they are recommending the Inspire Science Series by McGraw-Hill, and they presented feedback from teachers and students on the resource. The professional development plan and costs were also presented. This topic will be brought back to the board for potential approval at the, at a future Our second discussion item was the Act 20 update. The purpose of this report is to provide information around Act 20, which was signed into law last July. The law was written to improve reading and literacy outcomes for K-12 students. This law requires several updates to literacy instruction, more specifically, the use of the science-aligned early reading instruction. Three members of the SDW Act 20 Task Force were present at the meeting and provided context and definitions for science-based early reading instruction, along with reviewing the key points and goals. Finally, they reviewed what we know now and how this team is working to continue a strong implementation of approved practices, many of which have already begun. Madam President, this concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, following the Student Services meeting in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. All right, moving on to our last committee this evening, Student Services. Uh, Mr. Wad will give the update tonight.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. Uh, the Student Services Committee meeting was held on February 6th of 2024. Uh, there was one action item and three discussion items on the agenda. Uh, the lone action item was, uh, Policy 5505 on academic honesty. This policy was initially adopted in 2017 as a district policy, policy, um, and at the time was not part of the Neola Library. Uh, since then, Neola has included this as part of their portfolio policies. Uh, for these reasons, the committee took action to discuss and rescind the original policy, and then the new policy, um, has minimal changes from that, including the definition of plagiarism, swapping the word presenting in place of using, and adding clarity when the expectation is in the student's, adding the expectation of what is expected, um, around students' own work. Uh, the original Policy 5505 was rescinded, and the new Policy 5505 was approved at the committee and was included in our consent agenda that was approved this evening.
Mrs. Voight.
I just want to note that the original policy was written in 2017, and a lot of changes have happened in the last eight years.
Uh, moving on to our discussion and information items, uh, there were three discussion and information items presented. The first, uh, was around, uh, Waukesha East Diploma and Rank. Sue Poppy, the East High School Principal, was joined by Laura Ryan, Director of Secondary Learning, and Mark Lerner, Director of Student Services, to introduce a proposal allowing Waukesha East Alternative School to issue a diploma to students who complete their high school requirements through one of Waukesha East's graduation pathways. At this time, students who complete graduation requirements at Waukesha East Alternative School are issued a diploma by their home high school. Due to the various graduation pathways offered at East High, High School, the administration is recommending that a diploma be issued by East because it would better represent the student's accomplishments and where their learning has taken place. The recommended changes also include eliminating class rank for students who complete their education at Waukesha East, as the various pathways available to students at East make it challenging to determine class rank. The administrative team has designed a phased-in approach with current juniors and seniors at East continuing to earn a diploma from their high school. The change would be fully implemented with the issuance of an East diploma and the end of the use of class rank at East for the graduating class of 2025-26. The proposal will be an action item at the March Student Services Committee meeting.
Any comments? Questions?
Okay, moving on to our second item, uh, discussion information item, the role, the role of school counselor. As the Student Services Team continued with the role of a series, the role of the school coun, counselors was highlighted. Mark Lerner, Director of Student Services, along with several school counselors, presented information regarding their roles throughout the School District of Waukesha. The School District of Waukesha employs 22 full-time school counselors to serve our students and families in the areas of academic achievement, college and career readiness, and social support. School counselors assist in the development of our students from elementary school into the middle school and then through high school. The method of delivery at each level looks different, but student growth remains the focus. At future Student Services meetings, there will be reports on the roles of other Student Services service providers. All right, and our final discussion item was around individual education plans, uh, otherwise known as IEPs. Students with special needs each have an IEP. Um, Lisa Pollan, the Director of Secondary Special Ed, Hadassah Robinson, Director of Elementary Special Ed, and Michelle Bedalov, Program Manager for Student Services, updated the board on system enhancements being implemented to strengthen our practices and processes around creating and implementing IEPs at our schools. The update touched on the following priorities: um, one, provide professional development relating to infinite campus; two, college and career-ready IEPs; and training for all administrators to align our practices for students with disabilities. The team also shared the next steps, including robust pro, uh, robust access and reporting of goals and supports for our regular education teachers, and the development of behavior intervention plans and 504 plans. Uh, the Student Services Committee will meet again on Tuesday, March 5th at 6:00 PM, and this completes the Student Services Committee report.
Mr. Moore?
I wanted to wait, I saw your face. I wanted to wait till Mr. Wad was done completely, but I did have a question, I guess, just a question going back to the first discussion topic of the class ranking. Um, I just wanted to know, and maybe Dr. Seibert could answer this, um, or, um, someone on his team, I mean, they work with Susan, uh, Principal Susan Poppy, you know, more closely. Um, when it comes to the ranking, how is that determined without, if, if we get rid of it? Uh, it's just a question. Who determines the valedictorian, who's sort of salutatorian, or is it even wrote out at, at East? Um, I just wanted to know, how would that be played out if, if, if ranking was eliminated? Just, just a question, so.
Why don't, why don't I try to start, Mr. Moore, and then Ms. Gunnerman can, can help too? The current way that the rank is done is because the East kids graduate from their home school, one of the comprehensive high schools, west, north, or south, their, their rank is through that school. And so, pathways that Mr. Wad described are very different at East now, where the kids are, are doing very different types of learning, and so it's very hard for them to figure out how to transfer the rank into the comprehensive high school as it is now, so they would remove that. And then they also thought because at East the pathways are so different, that rank would not necessarily be needed. That's the way I remember the conversation, but Ms. Gunnerman, feel free to fill in any gaps.
Yes, I would, um, concur with that. There's also an additional document that was presented, and you can access in Board Docs, that gives a little bit more detail as far as when the student is primarily enrolled at East versus another school, and then the actual program at East, and then the graduation requirements, and then the diploma received, and then rank, where the rank is included or not included. But yes, overall, East would not have a whole school ranking system moving forward.
Right, no, I had a chance to look at the graduation requirements, but thank you for clarifying the last part with the ranking, because that was, I was confused with that part. So that's why I asked, like, how is that determined? I didn't, I didn't understand that part when, who ranks number one, who ranks number two in terms of valedictorian, but that makes sense in terms of what you just described, so thank you.
Mrs. Voight.
I think, I don't know that they've addressed the specific thoughts of who would be the valedictorian or salutatorian, but in the context of doing things differently at East, they could have it, just choose a student speaker and not necessarily use those traditional types of, you know, ranking persons to speak.
I think that would be consistent with all of our other high schools already, that there's a student speaker. Um, it's just such a different path. I think what, um, what Mrs. Poppy has done with the culture and the high standards at East is just exceptional. Um, and I can appreciate that a lot of the students come to East through a pretty non-traditional pathway, and trying to weave that back into a, a GPA rank, um, in one of our other high schools gets a little bit complicated, but.
Because the programs are all so different when they get there, so I understand, I was just asking the question, that's my preference, just asking a question, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an important question.
Mrs. Voight.
I think one of the concepts that she was trying to share is that, you know, traditionally, it was important to be able to get a traditional high school diploma, even though they were going through this, you know, alternative placement. And many of the students that are there now are there by choice because of the pathways that they're offering, and they feel very much a part of that school and not necessarily part of that home school. Many of the, the students are not just there for their senior year, or just junior, senior year. They're there, starting already, you know, earlier on in their educational program, and they have a lot more loyalty, and I, I think, just, she's just an amazing leader, that they're feeling very, very much, you know, a connection there, and, and not as much to the traditional high school that they may have, maybe associated with.
All right, any other comments or questions? Mrs. Koenig.
I just want to comment on something, uh, Mr. Wad had, um, discussed earlier, the, um, the role of the, the, the counselors, uh, social worker psychologists. What a pleasure it's been, um, for Student Services, the committee, to, to, you know, sit through these presentations and just see the incredible work that, you know, these different groups are providing for our students. It was just, I mean, for me, coming from the schools, I've always seen how hard, you know, these groups work and the incredible things they do, but it's just been really wonderful to showcase them at each of our meetings, um, and I can tell that they've really appreciated that opportunity. I've heard that through several, you know, of them, you know, over the last few months, how they really appreciated that opportunity to come and share and tell the things that they do and, um, what falls under their umbrella. So I just want to, you know, give a shout out and thank you again to those groups that have done that.
Agree, it's really, um, informative to listen to all of that. All right, um, I'm not seeing any more waving. Um, moving on, are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Mrs. Voight.
I have one. Um, the, the review of the number of special ed teacher and aid openings and the effects that that might have on IEP minutes that are necessary by, by, by prescribed legislation.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a need for closed session tonight, so not seeing any other requests. That concludes our meeting for this evening. We're adjourned.